How's it going, everyone? Welcome to the Guam Congress Building. And thank you for being here today. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture is now called to order. Today's Tuesday, January 30, 2024. The time is about 2:11 PM. In compliance with the open government law, notice for this public hearing was published in the Guam Daily Post and posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Tuesday, January 23rd and Friday, January 26th. Notices were also sent by email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. This hearing is being livestreamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating your name for record-keeping purposes. In an effort to minimize distractions while someone is testifying, the committee asked those present to please refrain from moving around within the public hearing room while there is someone testifying. And we've asked protocol to keep the doors quiet as well. Individuals presenting testimony are invited to also submit written testimony afterwards to ensure their input is accurately transcribed. After testifying, panelists will only be allowed to speak again in a direct response to questioning or invitation of a senator who has the floor or when recognized by the chair. All right, the agenda for this afternoon's hearing is Bill Number 232-37COR. It's introduced by myself. It is an act to adopt the 48 new hospital fees proposed by the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority and received by Emane Trantechetin Alhezretan Guahan on January 29, 2024. And so for those who are listening, these fees were transmitted to the legislature pursuant to the Administrative Adjudication Act. And pursuant to that act, they are adopted by default unless the legislature does any other action on them. So in order to do that, we have to have a hearing on these if the legislature wants to amend them or not approve those. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues, beginning with Senator Titekwe. Thank you, Senator, and Senator Frank Blas, the minority leader, Sutusmasi, Senator, for being here. All right, so this public hearing is intended to give relevant stakeholders the opportunity to speak on the 48 new fees recently proposed by Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. And they have this authority pursuant to Section 80109 of Title 10, which allows GMH to conduct a public hearing on its own, which they did on December 15th regarding the new fees, and subsequently submitted the fee package to the legislature on January 9th, 2024. According to the statute, the legislature has 45 days from receipt of the fees to conduct a public hearing and approve the fees. We are currently on day 21 since the receipt of these fees. The 48 new fees went into effect as of September 1st of 2023. According to Chapter 80 of Title 10, GMH has the ability to establish interim fees provided that the hospital petitions for permanent approval of the interim fees within three months of the establishment of the fees. So over the years, GMH has promulgated multiple new and adjusted fees. The following is a brief overview of the fees adopted by the GMH Board of Trustees for the past two years, which is 2022 and 2023. So 2022, Resolution 2022-21 was relative to approving 42 new fees. On May 2024, Resolution 2022-41, relative to approving 21 new fees and updating 8,913 professional fees. Resolution 2022-51 approved on July 28th relative to approving 26 new fees. In September 2022, Resolution 2023-16, relative to approving 39 new fees was passed. At the start of 2023, GMH introduced and passed Resolution 2023-24 relative to approving 135 new fees in January 2023. In April of 2023, the Board of Trustees passed Resolution 2023-38 relative to approving 65 new fees. In August of 2023, Resolution 2023-61 relative to approving 73 new fees and 22 proposed room and board rates were adopted. In October 2023, Resolution 2024-06 relative to approving 202 new fees and 16 proposed fee adjustments of oxygen supplies. Resolution Number 2024-15 relative to approving 48 new fees is what we are discussing today, and that was approved at the end of 2023 by the board. So these promulgated fees, of course, have economic impact on patients, insurance companies, and other stakeholders. But of course, these are also promulgated to ensure GMH's financial situation is improved. We'll now receive testimony on Bill Number 232-27. I would just invite, I think, everyone who signed up who wants to testify is invited to please step forward. We'll begin, of course, with the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority representatives, including the CEO, Lilian Perez-Pasadas, and your team, if you would like to introduce them.
Buenas noches, Madam Speaker, and Senator Telo and Senator Frank Blas. My name is Lilian Perez-Pasadas. I am the hospital administrator. And on behalf of the hospital, we thank you for this opportunity. The bill proposed today recognizes the efforts of the GMH to update its fees and create charges for new and necessary services. And as you mentioned, Madam Speaker, that we are following the statute of the 10 GCA subsection 80109. And we appreciate the efforts and the recognition of this legislative body to support our ongoing needs to then update and effectuate these fees and prices. And many of these fees, as you can see on the list, are pharmaceutical items. And as we had mentioned in previous hearings, that across the nation, pharmaceutical items have gone up 20% across the nation. And so some of these items, pharmaceutical items, we have had to raise, increase the fees on them. And then the other items are the interventional radiology diagnostic and treatment procedures and some of the consumable medical supplies that we need for these doctors to then provide the diagnostic and surgical procedures, interventional radiology, as well as some of the gastroenterology, the GE, GI specialists that we were successfully recruited last year. Of course, he's been doing many, many diagnostic procedures and treatment procedures. And so we've had to get some of that equipment plus the consumable medical supplies. So that's what we, that these rates, the fees are that we are putting into effect. And we've effectuated this rate since last year. And so they are already in our system. But thank you for recognizing our efforts and hopefully supporting our efforts to make sure that these fees we charge for the services that we provide to sustain a hospital's financial viability. So thank you. To my left is Yuka Hetchenova. She is our CFO. To her left is Mr. Jordan Pauloon, who is our legal counsel. And in the back, we also have Ms. Sidie Tysekhen. She oversees our revenue cycle integrity program at the hospital and the business office. And then we have Rodalyn Ruardo, who just joined us recently as the deputy assistant for operations. Did I miss anybody? Those are our representatives from the hospital. Thank you.
Did anyone else from GMH want to testify? Yuka, please.
Yuka Hetchenova, CFO at GMHA. I just wanted to add that one of the, we've had these hearings every quarter, and prior to the pandemic, they were actually held in our boardroom. And we had practically no attendance. Most likely, we have a parking situation. It's just inconvenient to get to the hospital. So the pandemic forced us to move to Zoom video conferencing. And as soon as we switched to Zoom, we have very good participation right now. All of the insurance providers attend. I think we had Senator Telo Tydekwe also attended a few hearings, and the media also attend. So we do have active participation right now. They attend the meetings, not all the time. They will submit testimony or ask questions, but they do attend, so they are aware of the fees coming up. And the opportunity is there for them to ask questions. Thank you.
All right. Any other testimony from GMH?
I don't have anything specific to add. I echo both of their statements, but I'm also happy to answer any questions that come up related to the fees or how we promulgated them.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to present testimony on this bill today? Mr. Campillo? Okay, written. All right, then. We received a fiscal note waiver from BBMR. They said the proposed fee schedule, quote, "will pose a positive fiscal impact on the revenue generation of the GMHA." GMHA further estimated net fiscal impact is 3.8 million in revenues comprised of 10.5 million in gross revenues and 6.7 million in costs to purchase new supplies and medicine. All right, so Yuka, maybe if you could just describe the process that you go through to promulgate the fee so everyone's on the same page.
The fees are requested by the different departments in the hospital. When there is a new item that needs to be charged that we purchased, they will send the request to the charge master, and then we create the fee from there based on a methodology that was created back in 1992 by Deloitte and Touche. And then we calculate the new charges and then create the code, and then it is uploaded into the charge master. And then we also inform the insurance providers of the new fee.
All right. And this might sound obvious, but so new fee means this is something that has never been charged separately before by GMH?
Yes, these are new items. So we take the purchase order as the cost and then calculate from there.
Okay. And with these new fees, then, do these match the new Medicare rates, or does that matter?
It doesn't matter. However, we do review periodically some of our old fees to see whether they are at least at the Medicare rate. And we have in, I believe, 2001 or '02, did an adjustment to at least the Medicare rate because some were very much under that rate.
When?
I feel like it was either 2020 or 2021, probably.
You adjusted what rates to go to Medicare, closer to Medicare? Which ones? I mean, was that, that's another set of rate adjustment? That was to raise rates?
Only those that were under the Medicare rate.
Okay. So what about the new ones?
No, these are just based on how much we purchased the items for. So they're based on cost.
And are these rates, as you're promulgating them, are these reimbursable then by Medicaid? I mean, these are accepted, whatever you say the new cost is, is acceptable to Medicare and Medicaid?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. So for these fees, was there any objection? These new fees, these 48 new fees that were promulgated since interim, since September? All right, the statute says that GMH has the ability to establish interim fees and can petition for permanent approval with Ilhezretan Guahan within three months from when the fees were established. But these were established September? What was the date? September 1st?
The earliest one is September 1st.
And they were sent to the legislature on January 9th? Does that exceed the statutory 30, three months?
Yes.
For those particular items? All right, I'm not sure the remedy for that, but okay, we're, I'm gonna open questions for my colleague, Senator Tydekwe.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon to you and my colleagues, and of course, those who are here testifying as well as those who are watching at home. You know, this affects many people, you know, any kind of rate increase. But my biggest concern right now is how will it affect the premiums currently right now? Because the bill says it shall become effective upon enactment. So if we've already calculated insurance premiums and these costs, you know, are effective right away, what repercussions do we have with our premiums?
We don't necessarily have any unique insight at the hospital as to how the insurance premiums are set. That's really the insurance companies. Related to the, specifically these 48 fees, though, these would be all new fees. And so all of the services that they're associated with, we would not be able to provide otherwise because some of them relate to gastroenterology or interventional radiology. So we had to establish these 48 fees for the purposes of recovering any sort of costs associated with certain procedures. So to the extent that they're going to impact insurance claims and premiums, that's going to be based on how frequently individuals are actually undergoing these procedures and making claims against the particular insurance carriers, which we don't necessarily have unique insight into beyond what the insurance companies would have. We can, you know, we would otherwise just not be able to offer some of these services that we have brought into the hospital recently.
The, hmm, okay. If you're changing in midstream right now on fees, right? I mean, insurance companies base their premiums, you know, based on cost. And if you're changing these costs, then there's going to be a change for these insurance companies because now what they say that they will cover, they would have to, they would have to charge more, or is that?
None of the, none of these 48 charges are a change in fees. They are all new fees for new items that have come into the hospital. So none of, none of these would be a change, which would then impact that portion. It is increased services and new items.
Okay, I understand now. Okay, so, okay, does that mean that the insurance companies can actually chime in now? And if this is offered as new procedures at the hospital, then that means insurance companies won't cover this, and it has to be paid out of pocket, right? Because it wasn't calculated in the?
That's a complex question related to the actual insurance coverage contract. Every insurance company will have a schedule of benefits and coverages that they'll provide members depending on the plan that's purchased, whether it's a government plan, a private company plan, the type of deductible. And then you just, with the services or the procedures that a patient undergoes, they get matched against the contract and that schedule of benefits and coverage. And then it's determined whether it's a, if it's a covered item first, and then there is a negotiated rate associated with every type of procedure, thing like that. So it really just goes off of the individual contract. So we can't, from our end, we don't have, again, unique insight into that. It really just, we submit the claim to the insurance company, who then compares it to their schedules of benefits.
Okay, so basically, it's not covered under the insurance policy, like the premiums? I'm sorry, you know, I know Frank is in the audience and probably can answer my question with you. I'm sorry to ask him to come up if he can just answer the question. If, if this is a new procedure that's offered, yeah, if you don't mind, Frank, I, okay, can come up as well? Yes, please, please. You can help concur with the comments you've made because, you know, Frank is with the government of Guam, and then, of course, you have the private sector side of it too as well. If you don't mind coming up, appreciate it. We have signed in today. Abner Collard from Calvo Select Care, Jordan, oh, no, sorry, Arvin Lojo from Take Care, Anthony Mendiola from Staywell, and Frank Campillo from Calvo Select Care. Okay, well, thank you. So Frank, if I may, and if you could just introduce who you are and who you work for. My question was, since these are new items, you know, procedures that are offered at GMH, does the insurance company obligate themselves to pay for this? Or is it they, because it's brand new and it wasn't incorporated in the premiums that were given out to the government of Guam employees, that they would have to pay the full amount?
So normally, we follow what is called medical necessity, and we follow criteria. In this case, if Medicare acknowledged coverage for these specific services, then most likely they're going to be covered by the private insurance. Remember, these are, these are services that are probably being charged by other facilities somewhere else. It's just that the hospital right now is introducing fees for these procedures. Am I correct in that? Yeah. So, so we haven't gone through each and every one of the procedures, but most likely, if it is a Medicare-guided and approved procedure and covered procedure, most likely, the insurance companies will follow us cover as well.
Okay, it's called what? Most insurance companies would call it?
So we follow Medicare guidelines in regards to coverage.
Okay.
And some of the procedures, like there is interventional radiology, they were not doing that before, now they're doing it, you know? So it's most likely that something like that would be covered, yeah.
Something like that.
We have to go through each of the 48 fees to validate, but most likely, if Medicare allows for something like that to be charged, and it's being done in other facilities across the nation, GMH is just coming up with those procedures, most likely, they'll be covered.
Okay, well, I appreciate that.
But to answer then, your question is, will this increase prices? Of course, you know, if they were not charging for that before, yeah, of course, it's going to, if you were going to your mechanic, brooding your car, and before in the package of your service, something was not being charged, and now it's being charged, that is going to increase costs, yeah, so.
So can you just introduce who you are? And I didn't know if I heard you. Can you introduce who you are and where you're?
Frank Campillo, Help Plan Administrator, Calvo Select Care.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to chime in, Mr., and if you can state your name for the record?
Good afternoon, Senator. I'm Arvin Lo, the Help Plan Administrator for Take Care. So similar to Frank, we do have coverage guidelines, most of it is Medicare. So in these cases, we haven't gone through all the lists, similar to what Frank mentioned, but since most of it are covered by Medicare, so most likely, we will also cover it. The difference here, because these are new fees, is we're probably paying these services already with other providers or facilities. The only question is how much more, how much different, or how much less is GMH going to charge them. And of course, it's going to impact premiums because in most cases, like most insurance companies, most of our clients renew in January. So at this point that we're talking, all, most of their premiums are already set for the year. So any rate changes will probably impact their renewals when, when they renew the next renewal cycle.
You know, that's what I thought, too. You know, there was two things. One, you know, increasing any kind of rate, you know, before the negotiations of an insurance carrier to cover, you know, that that's actually the time that we should increase these, these costs, you know, where they review the schedule and, and make the recommendations for any kind of increase closer to when we're negotiating. So that gives the insurance companies to provide a more accurate cost to, to the client, which is, you know, us as, I pay my premiums as a government of Guam employees, how much it's going to really truly cost us. And what was other confusing was that, that I was actually asking the Speaker's office for a list of these particular items that are going to be, that have the, the amount on, and now you're saying they're new. So that's probably why I didn't get a list to compare. But you said earlier that these, this cost was like 20% more, so, or is it from the U.S. that they charge, from 20% more? Is that what you meant? But you said something about increased it about 20%. So I'm kind of understanding where you're getting that comparative that would increase. Can you?
Thank you for that question. What I was stating was that across the U.S., there has been a 20% markup on all pharmaceutical items. But these are new items, and so therefore, those markup is not reflected in this list because these are new items.
Okay, now I understand. So you got these prices based on U.S. costs or, or how much it's charging, GMH is being charged? And then you increased it by 20%?
No.
Okay, so you, you're basing it on how much it's costing GMH?
Yes.
And you're not incorporating an additional 20%? Okay, so everybody can relax on that part. Okay, so that's, that's good to know, right? So can you concur? That's true, right?
The, the prices come from the purchase order, so the actual cost of it, we do have a methodology where it is marked up in order to cover our costs. However, we are limited that we cannot go over $500. So if an item is, say, a dollar, our markup is, I believe, five times, so it'll go up to $5. But we cannot, if an item is $1,000 and we mark it up times five, it'll be $5,000, but we're not allowed to go up that high. It can only go up as far as $500. So any item here will not be more than $500 of the actual cost.
I see. And this formula that you use, that you said that you follow Deloitte and Touche's recommendation, was in 1992, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's, that's quite a bit of a ways out, you know, new things of, have you looked at adjusting those or revisiting that formula?
We have. And it would increase the cost significantly more, so we have not implemented any changes to the methodology at this time because we're just worried about how much of the impact it's going to be. It would really have to be something gradual and adjusted probably for the current cost that we have right now.
What is the recommendation on revisiting this formula? Is it every five years, every 10 years, or?
I'm not sure if there was any recommendation made. It was just, the report came out in 1992, and it was adopted by the board. And it is also mentioned in the enabling legislation that we have regarding the powers of the board and how they adjust fees. It specifically mentions the Deloitte net revenue pricing model to use it.
I think it's something that needs to be revisited, even though I know it's going to cost so much. But every time we delay, delay, delay on things that should have increments, you know, with the inflationary costs and stuff like that, then once we try to address it, it's like bam, kind of like the 22% pay raise, you know? We should have done that gradually, and then we get hit really hard. This is almost similar to that, that, you know, we should be looking at, and I would hope the board, you know, does look into that on that. So I'm, I'm also concerned that, you know, I know there was no objection on this increase, or not increase, but this, these recommendations on costs for new items in pharmaceutical as well. But I'm just worried about, you know, I just don't want to see anything go like skyrocket like we did on the last increase in, in costs at the hospital, where it went over 60%. like we did on the last increase in, in costs at the hospital where it went over 60%. And that really, really hurt, you know, the community as well as our, those who pay premiums because, you know, it's shouldered on the people on that amount. So, but that was prior. I hope we can revisit that too, Madam Speaker, if we have a chance to look at those increases and maybe make some adjustments on the prior one that was passed without, you know, legislative approval. It just lapsed into law. We really need to look at that. Go back, yeah. Okay, that's all the questions I have right now and I thank you for your time. Thank you, Frank. And from Take Care, thank you for coming up. I didn't mean to, you know, put you on the spot right now and look forward to your testimony, your written testimony when it comes out, but it's very helpful. I mean, anybody listening to this wants to know if this is going to affect their premiums, you know, that's where it boils down to. But I thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Taitiwi. I'd like to also recognize the presence of Senator Roy Canata and Senator Sabina Perez. Thank you for coming. But I'll recognize Senator Frank Blas now for questions or comment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you to the panel for being here today. Ms. Chinova or Ms. Posades, these are with, with the, obviously these are new items for...
Yes, they're new.
Are these new items for existing services that are being offered?
Yes, most of them are like a supply item. So for interventional radiology, for example, there's a procedure that they would perform for interventional radiology. In this case, these are stents and so there's a new item that we purchased that is going to be used for an interventional radiology procedure. And so in order for us to charge, we need a charge code for these new items and that's what we did with this, is create a new charge code.
So, so, so these are new items, new pieces of equipment and whatnot, supplies, medicines for procedures that you already do in the hospital?
Yes.
So for the most part, these are procedures that have already been, I guess, identified. Correct me if I'm wrong with the insurance industry. I mean, I'm going to go ahead and tap on you guys since you're already here, sitting at the table. So these are new items for existing procedures that may or may not be covered by, by, by the insurance plans that subscribers have or that, that your members have? Is this, am I, is this correct there?
So Senator, to clarify again, if this is medically necessary and we have medical guidelines, for instance, I think the easiest one that I can refer to is the, okay, pacemaker, yeah, that's, that's covered. Some, some plans have limitations on the coverage, but that should be covered. The diagnostic stigmatoscopy, that would be an easy one to, that should be a covered benefit, you know, so for the most part, and we haven't gone through each 48, 48 of them, you know, so please don't, don't, don't hold me to the 48 ones, but for the most part, this procedure should be covered, yeah.
Are any of these, I guess, items here that are new, basically new to the hospital? Are any of these related to any of the services where you've increased the fees or you've increased the rates over the last 12 months?
I'm sorry, Senator, what was the question? I didn't quite understand.
I'm, I'm trying to see if there's any connection between any of these supplies or any, anything that's on this chart with any of the services that have their, their fees or their rates increased over the last 12 months?
I'm not sure that they're increased, but perhaps like Mr. Frank Campillo pointed out, like the pacemaker?
Right.
We've been doing pacemaker insertions by our cardiology, but depending on the consumable, the lead and the device itself may have changed because the company no longer provides that.
Okay.
And so that's why it's a new fee for that particular type of a service and consumable supply.
I think that's just about it for now. I'm pretty much at it. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Canata? Senator Perez?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, so I was doing a little research on the fees and they, some of them actually are lower than the national standards for some of them. And yeah, it seems pretty reasonable if you do that comparisons. And yeah, I guess the concern is, you know, whether it be covered by Medicare or Medicaid. Have you looked into, I mean, obviously if it's medically necessary, right? That's the, the criteria. But do you generally find that these procedures are covered by Medicare in general or Medicaid?
I, I would say yes, because we do have the CPT codes all listed on here as well. So it describes what the procedure is that the supply will be used for.
And then you were saying, when was the last time that, or these are new, when was it last, when was it last updated, these fees?
All of these particular charges are all new charges for new types of pharmaceuticals and procedures and equipment. So all, all of these 48 are new items. And, you know, if you look a little bit further down, there's some that are related in special services related to colonic, colonic things and gastroenterology items. And part of that is GMH has recruited a gastroenterologist in part, so there are some supplies that are necessary for his procedures that we otherwise hadn't done at GMH but had been done in the community or even sometimes off island. And so we've, we've been able to bring some of those services to GMH. But they've been established services either in the community or in the, in the medical field generally before that, that there would have been established coverage guideline either under private insurance or Medicare/Medicaid.
And because they're new, that, that means you weren't, you weren't able to recover costs on these, is that correct? It had to be, or how, how did you?
We didn't have these items or services previously. So we, you know, and sometimes it's just a change of equipment, like with the pacemaker. We have, you might have pacemaker version one, but when a company rolls out pacemaker version two, it's actually a different item that you have to go in and do a charge, a different charge code on because the costs might be different and you apply the formula again.
Similarly, if I may, similarly with some of these medications, these medications, yeah, we've had them, but because again, a different form, like if it's a, it used to be a tablet, but now they have suspension. And so it's just a different form that then these medications are new. So therefore they're new fees.
Great, thank you. Is there, is there anyone else that would like to add to this? I see some looks, okay. All right, well, thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Perez. If I could just ask, so you said these fees are promulgated quarterly pretty much and the insurance companies all get notice, of course, and the public gets notice? And do the insurance companies, do you have any issue with this process? That they are allowed to promulgate fees, they do it pursuant to the AAA, they, they establish them interim while they're being sent to the legislature, I guess?
No, I think the process is very clear and they do a public hearing, you know, it's the opportunity for us to speak. One Senator mentioned earlier that the only part and the only time when insurance companies get concerned is when you have high, high increases at one point of, of existing fees because you're not able to change your pricing soon. It impacts the consumer. We realize that GMH needs to be sustainable, they need to have, the world has increased all around, but we just would like to see more sustainable increases, you know, so that's the only time when we get concerned, you know, when there is high increase at one time.
All right. And so what makes GMH decide, like, these need to be changed now versus, I mean, so as opposed to like, do you have this whole list available to you at the beginning of the year and you just divide it into quarters or you're just finding out about them as the quarters come by?
You're talking about establishing a new charge. It comes to us from the servicing department. So they're the ones that are requesting the new fee. And the way we schedule the hearings is we have one every quarter, so we have dates or the months, of course, March, June, September, and December. So whatever new fees are implemented in the three months prior to that, we try to roll it all up into that one meeting. And it's really coming from the servicing departments when they need a new charge code. We don't, we don't develop a charge code just for the sake of it. They, they have the need for it, you know, there's a new item and then they do the request and then we process it from there.
Okay. The reason I ask about the beginning of the year versus throughout the quarters is because, you know, the insurance companies, so like, for example, they've set rates for us for a year, right? They set that in whenever they begin. It's either fiscal year for the government or January 1 for other people, but they set their rates for the year. And so let's say throughout that year, if, if GMH increased their rates, they are not able to get that from us customers. They have to, I guess, absorb that until the next year and then decide whether to raise it up or, and raise the cost for us customers, right? Which is, I guess, good for us customers, but I can see the impact that it would have on the others. Have you raised rates, maybe, I don't know, never mind, I, that's just speculative. I was going to say, have you raised it in response to GMH? I mean, have, but you've said these are pretty reasonable, so...
We don't have data on this because again, you know, the hospital was not charging for this before, you know, so we don't know the full impact of this, Senator.
Okay.
Of these 48 fees.
Senator, one thing that we also need to consider is although we will not be able to increase rates, this is especially something that will impact those plans which have coinsurance, like the government of Guam. Like in any case where there's a huge increase in fees, that will also increase the, the out-of-pocket for the members, right? So because if you're, if you're charging $100 for now and then you will make it to 200 and you're paying 10% coinsurance and that, so instead of, you know, $10 based on 100, now the, the member that's going to access the same service will now have to pay 20. But again, you know, we are supportive of, of, of these fees. We just probably need to have a better process to figure out how we can help GMH. Of course, GMH needs our help, but also make sure that we minimize the impact on the consumers, right? Because what we're also avoiding from the perspective of the insurance companies is for this, the premiums to increase significantly next year and then this member doesn't take insurance, which we don't really want to happen because then it's either they go self-pay, which is probably going to be harder for GMH to collect, or they go to MIP or Medicaid, which, you know, either way, somebody have to pay for it.
All right, thank you for clarifying that. So I was wrong, that these do impact consumers in the middle of the year as well if they're paying a percentage, right, of the, like the 10%. Okay. Is there anything else GMH would like to add or anyone before we conclude the hearing Want to thank those who came out in attendance for this today and thank you for your offers of assistance to GMH as well and to our committee. Sidozmasi, thank you. This bill, number 232-372R is duly heard.